Good evening and welcome to the Garfield Heights City School District Special Board Meeting Work Session. Today is Monday, June 12th, 2023, and I call this evening's meeting to order. Mr. Oco, can I roll call please?
Yes, Mr. Eisen, here, Ms. King?
Here.
Ms. Morrison?
Here.
Ms. Thomas?
Here.
Mrs. Daniels?
Here. At this time, can I have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda, please? So move. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, Mr. Oco, that was moved by Ms. King and second by Ms. Thomas, can we have roll call, please?
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Eisen?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes. At this time, our first item on our agenda is our TSL update. I will turn it over to Dr. Reynolds and he can introduce our presenter this evening.
Thank you, Madam President. For the last several months, Ms. Sizzler has been working diligently to ensure that she's able to provide more information on the TSL grant and her efforts, and her team's efforts to really organize the requirements of these grants. This is an opportunity for us to really take advantage of funding that will allow us to do multiple things and she'll have an opportunity to tell you a little more about it and offer some questions at the end, and Ms. Mendez.
Thank you, Dr. Reynolds. Where do you want me to stand?
More, you can just kind of go over there, would be perfect, yeah.
Hopefully, Dr. Reynolds. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak with you tonight about the TSL grant. TSL stands for Teacher School Leader. We're part of a cohort of other districts, or four other districts, that partner with a group called Insight Education to build systems that can be in place long after the TSL grant, that improve in our instructional practices and our recruitment and retention efforts, as well as building leadership capacity, so. Let's make sure I'm right here. I began working on the TSL grant in particular at the beginning of January, where I started to dig into what are the three components, what are the objectives of each of the three components, and then what can Garfield Heights do to improve our practice in each of those buckets? And we just started digging in. My first bucket, as I mentioned, was instructional improvement. I'm going to talk about each of these specifically and then at the end you can ask any questions or feel free to interrupt and ask questions as we go in time, anyway. We're very fortunate, by the way, to be a part of the TSL grant. The partnerships that we've been able to build with the other districts that are TSL grants, but also with the consultants and the ESC, and also through Insight Education have been literally invaluable, providing us insight into things that are happening nationally and then regionally as well. So I'll just dig right into each of these components. My first one was instructional improvement. I started, and I'm not sure where we're at in understanding, but the district, at the beginning of the school year, we started with instructional coaching. We took a move to talk about, to look at instructional practices and at the beginning of the year, we had an instructional coach in each of the elementary buildings. Through partnership and data with Insight Education and the ESC, we understood that that wasn't equitable because we have kids in the other buildings as well and new teachers in other buildings. And when we look at the impact of instructional coaching, this is where it's at. Job embedded professional development for teachers right there in the moment. So we took a look at that and in January, when I started to take over, we put a coach in every single building. And it has made a ton of difference in terms of what we've been able to offer in terms of professional development. And so we can take a look at each one of those. The district adopted Jim Knight, Dr. Jim Knight's model of instructional coaching. And it's student-centered instructional coaching, so all the data used to inform the coaching moves, is what I call it, is based on student outcomes. So teachers partner with their coach for whatever data component they're deciding to work through. The coaches and I worked together, we partnered, we started last year and then finished up this year Coaching Manual, literally building what is it that an instructional coach does and what are the philosophies and the work that we're supposed to do that aligns with, unmistakably positively affecting students every single day. In that same vein, we built an instructional playbook. And they're linked here on the presentation, and I'll share the presentation with you and if you'd like to see some of this, I can show it to you as well. This year, the instructional coaches worked together to make the instructional playbook digital. And so it will be linked and accessed, and everybody in the district will have access to our playbook. It's literally a researched playbook, for lack of a better term, but all of the strategies are straight out of the Visible Learning, or John Hattie's research. The highest impact strategies that the coaches spent the entire year being professionally developed on so that we can teach it to teachers right in the moment. So each of these, when you look at the research, what teacher moves make the highest impact on students and what can we get better at doing instructionally? So the coaching department worked on building those. And next year, we'll roll that out to all TBTs, all building leaders, and it will inform how we speak about teaching, how we talk about learning, how we talk to teachers about teaching and learning, and how we talk to students about their own learning. So it brings everybody to the table to talk about that educational journey for our scholars. And again, the whole model's founded on Dr. Jim Knight, his work through instructional coaching. In terms of instructional improvement, we needed to take a look at district data to inform what professional development we're going to do. And Dr. Reynolds partnered with, well, we made an academic test course is really what happened. And we found out through research that the teachers needed some help in terms of what to teach. And we really wanted to get back to the basics and so the coaches got busy. We started understanding Dr. Nancy Fisher, Dr. Doug Fry's work on teacher clarity, which is basically teaching standards. We dug into and read, we did a partnership together as a team and we read the Culture Responsive Practices in the Brain, and that's Zretta Hammond's work. That talks about rigor and making sure that we are providing students what they need based on their backgrounds, how we build relationships and inform what students need. So the coaches got busy doing that, and also explicit instruction. So we had this model, and I'm not sure if you heard Dr. Reynolds talk about it, but what we teach is the standards, how we teach is explicitly, and that's Dr. Anita Arger. And the SEL is there in the middle with Dr. Zretta Hammond's work because it's what glues it all together. So we wanted to make sure we were tight and right on a PD plan and that we developed, that we use data to inform how we professionally help our students. And that all came from this deep dive into this work. And each of the coaches worked really hard to get ahead of those things. So they provide professional development in all three components. So when we look at what is best instruction, we need to model that, right? So we need to have opportunities for whole group, those are PD days, smaller group, and building level. And so those are building, this year, we started implementing instructional staff meetings so that principals can inform what's going on specific to their building, how are their teachers doing in these district initiatives? And so they get an extra PD day tailored specifically to their building every day, or every month, excuse me. The coaches provide small group coaching cafes based on teacher interest, teacher request, feedback. It's literally a, hey, let's come in and talk about explicit instruction or some new UDL or some other type of professional development, and the coaches just partner with them, with the teachers, and they come in casual, one touch up. And then the 101, this is the intensive coaching that the coaches have been trained on for getting into a classroom with teacher, collecting data, and planning teacher moves, teaching specific strategies like we talked about in the instructional playbook. And so now we are providing a gamut of professional development with intention and it's all data-informed. I'm really proud of that work. One other thing that the TSL grant has afforded us in terms of professional development, and this is innovative, is the teaching channel. And so what we have been able to do is offer a statement to teachers who demonstrate competency in those areas of teacher clarity, SEL, explicit instruction, and culture responsive teaching. What we are doing, and what they've been practicing doing for the past couple of months since we've got them, is videotaping their lessons. So now, there's no more excuse for that won't work here, that doesn't work with our population of students because we have on video our teachers using these strategies with our students and are uploaded right into the teacher channel and accessible to everybody. So if I'm a teacher and I'm looking at my data, my kids, my students just really, I can't do another thing, blah, blah, blah. I'm just going to hashtag explicit instruction and see what comes up. And then we get to watch ourselves and each other teach at night at 9:00 PM when I'm trying to figure out my lesson plan and I finally got my kids to bed, or just whenever. We can use the videos to inform TBT practices, take a look at different strategies and what they look like, and also coaching conversations with principals. So if I'm in a meeting with my principal and I'm being evaluated or I'm just in a coaching conversation with my principal and we're trying to figure out what I can do better, this is now again another resource outside of and in addition to the instructional, the digital instructional playbook that we can really just use to start again guiding us in our conversations about high-impact instructional practices and informing our teacher moves. Before I move on to this component, I would be completely remiss and it would be irresponsible of me not to acknowledge the people who did all that work in instructional leadership. So I just need to say to you that some of the most hard-working individuals this year, and I am so honored to lead them, and I just want to call them off by name, is Ms. Debbie Crin in Maple Leaf, Ms. Brianna Ray Kemper at the high school, Ms. Jennifer Carrato at the middle school, Dr. Stan Lipinski is our mentor coming to us from the ESC, Ms. Cara Rice, she was also at the high school and also at the beginning of the year in the elementary schools, Ms. Betsy Raymer, she's at Lloyd Foster, Ms. Gabby Claymer was at the LC, and then Ms. Nicole Mirk was at Alwood. These individuals have been monumental in their work of instructional practices, and I'm proud to call them colleagues. Okay, emotional peace out. District leadership. So this is something that we have been able to take with and run and starting tomorrow, we are going to be hosting the first annual Aspiring Leaders Academy where we've done a call-out to district employees. And if they want to come and learn about our district initiatives and how they can plug in in their leadership roles, they get to come and partner with us in Insight Education to learn about those things. And it starts tomorrow, I'm super excited and also a little nervous about that as well. So they will participate first in this June 13th and 14th Academy. We plan to do that now that structures are built and in place and I'll work out teams as I go. But they'll be able to have the opportunity to participate in monthly collaboratives hosted by Insight Education. And this is a phenomenal gift for our district in terms of building leadership capacity. The big trend in leadership right now is to grow your own. We talk about that with teachers as well, but also in terms of leaders. Plug people in early, get, build on some success, some knowledge about what the district initiatives and values are, and then you get the retention of people who've been doing the work and they're kind of on board with what you're doing. So they have opportunity to partner and attend monthly professional development sessions. And so they'll learn about that in the next couple of days and then sign up if they're ready to rock and roll. So I'm really excited about that. The other thing the district gets to do, and this is also unique to our district, is we are going to have onsite what we're calling Bulldog Institute, we'll be able to repeat this over and over and over again. But it's literally the partnership with the aspiring leaders, the district principals, and building leadership to work on ahead of time, building their school improvement plans and mapping those out for the year. So one of the things that we decided to do here as a district, which again is outside of what anybody else has been able to do so far in the TSL cohort, is through the Bulldog Institute, we will get two things. The aspiring leaders will be able to develop and build out and map out a school improvement plan with their leaders. They'll get approval from Dr. Reynolds, this is something he likes to see, blah, blah, blah. As they're on their leadership journey, this goes on their resume. And also we get a finished school improvement plan at the end of the year. So it's part of the TSL grant, it's part of the, and the aspiring leaders program, so they'll be coached throughout and checked on by us. And it's a two-pronged kind of thing for your buck, I'm really excited to do it and to see what we get out of it. The work is pretty rigorous and intense and you guys know that. So the TSL grant's offering, supports the TSL grant's offering us what we need to kind of make that needle a little bit. Okay. The third component is recruitment and retention. The district really has made some big gains over the past few months on the recruitment and retention aspect of the TSL grant. So in this bucket, we partner with Dr. Pete Leida, who is recruitment and retention kind of guru. Super, super fortunate to work with him and get to meet him. On building what they're calling a campaign. And Sean and I went in January to New Orleans and we learned about this in the same way that businesses recruit and campaign. So when we say Garfield Heights, what do people want to hear? Grow with Garfield, grow with Garfield, just like you see the Guide Code, just like you see Flow from Progressive. And we literally learned marketing campaigns. And then how do we apply that into an educational setting? And what does that even mean? So we built the Grow With Garfield campaign, logo and all. And some of you may be familiar with a lot of it, I hope that video will just come out and play. But if you haven't seen it, we started from what they call cradle to grave. So if I am a person who is looking for employment, it could be in any age range, a veteran teacher, somebody who's retired and coming back, it can also be in any category. So I'm a community member who's looking for a part-time job and I want to come clean at night. Any of these things, the campaign promise is that when you come here, our investment is in you to grow professionally or whatever way that goes, and that everybody who steps on our campuses is here to grow in some way, for whatever reason that might be. And so we made the recruitment video, I think it's up on the website, and also recruitment, you can see out here, Ms. Gina Major has really done a great job of developing a campaign for people when they come in, that they, that we're saying the same things, we mean the same things, we're speaking the same language about, we truly want, all of us here are here to grow, grow children, grow ourselves, and kind of like this kind of garden field is how I talk about it quite often. And we've been out here, I'm going to pass that unless you guys want to play it.
One word to describe Garfield Heights is progressive. As a district, we are continuously improving and moving forward at the district, always looking for new ways to support our students and staff. Garfield Heights has supported my growth as an experienced educator by providing me teacher leadership opportunities and professional development that will equip me with the skills I need to achieve my professional goals.
My name is Sarah Ruth and I'm a proud teacher at Garfield Heights Middle School for the last eight years, a place where there's so much life and activity in our building. I love working at the middle school during these formative years with opportunity to maintain connections with students and families. For example, I'll teach an eighth grader and then watch as they grow and mature in high school and sometimes I'll meet a younger sibling at a conference or other school event and someday I'll teach them too. For me, this makes me feel connected and I love every minute of my time in Garfield Heights.
If I had to choose one word to describe Garfield Heights City School, it would be supportive. Since I've been teaching here and from day one, every teacher, every administrator, every one at Central Office, the first thing they've always asked me has been, what can we do to help you, what do you need? And it's been not just them asking, but them following through on that question that has really made me feel like part of the Garfield family. I guess what I would say to anyone who's an experienced educator that's looking for a place to land is, think about Garfield Heights. It's all built around people that love kids and that want to help this community, help these kids reach their level of success.
Unique is a word that describes what is special about Garfield Heights. And there's a great many things that make our district unique. From my perspective, Garfield Heights has been unique in its approach to education with the creation of the Learning Center. Garfield is a great place for experienced teachers because we can use our expertise to adapt to necessary changes. Our approach to change can help guide our students to accept change as a way of life.
Overall, Garfield Heights has been great in supporting me and achieving my professional goals and truly fosters the grow your own mentality in helping teachers within the district advance their career.
Garfield has supported my growth as an educator by allowing me to be creative and unique in my approach to teaching our students.
It has provided a lot of opportunities for me to grow as an educator through collaborative conversations and through professional developments that specifically target those issues and needs that I have in my classroom as I try to meet the needs of my students.
There's no doubt about it. Garfield Heights has fantastic teachers and working here has given me so many opportunities to collaborate, learn from, and grow alongside all of my colleagues. Teaching middle school can be challenging, but I firmly believe that nothing will expand your skill set as an educator faster than teaching middle schoolers.
And coming to the district as a second grade teacher, I've had the opportunity to grow as a professional and now serve as a coach the amazing teachers in this district in integrating social-emotional learning into their classrooms.
I have grown so much as an educator here at GHDN because I was given room to grow and I have formed bonds with some wonderful educators and staff that make me a better educator.
The connection in Garfield Heights as a teacher is strong. Connection with the students, connection with the families, connection with the administration. Everyone should experience this wonderful connection.
For experienced teachers, Garfield Heights has several opportunities to grow as leaders, be a part of great professional learning communities with some really talented teachers within the district, and it's a great place to work and grow as a professional.
Teaching is my second career and I plan to retire from Garfield Heights. This is the best job I have ever had. I know that I have made a positive difference in the lives of so many of my students over the years. I'm grateful for the Garfield Heights City School.
We're here for every child, every day, together. Grow with Garfield, grow with Garfield.
Grow with Garfield.
Grow with Garfield.
So good, right? It's so good, right? I'm so proud of that work. And Mr. Jim fruits is magic in terms of producing wonderful, wonderful content. So we built this campaign and we want to talk the talk and walk the walk. And we've really been working with the Insight Education Group and Recruitment and Retention Team that I can't wait to tell you who these people are and the hard work that they've been doing to ensure that when we're out here recruiting, when we're out here having conversations with the people who do work here or offering them here, that anybody can come here, that we're all-inclusive. Come here because you're later in your career, come here because you're retiring, looking for something more to do or serve your community, whatever that is, that when you come here, our intention is for you to grow and that everybody, no matter where they are in their walk of life, is welcome to service and be serving leaders in our district. These are some of the campaigns out. We're looking real tight and right and some of the job fairs that we've attended. So we went to Xavier, Ms. Cara Rice went down to Xavier and did some recruitment efforts. She was a top recruiter on the team at that event. Mr. Paul Blazer went to Findlay and the Ohio State University, again, top recruiter at the event. Just having something to say with materials, with our Grow With Garfields, we have, well, it's not up, but we have our backdrop and we have our video playing, QR codes where they can immediately scan into our AppleTrack and our employment website, they're right there, we're getting their contact information, we're making these connections. The campaign is meant and built to follow up with them. So we're having those phone calls after we met you at the job fair and we're saying, hey, it was wonderful to meet you, had you visit our website, is there any additional questions that you have for us? And we're getting out there, making connections. Mr. Patton and Ms. Major went to the noted job fair that's hosted through Baldwin Wallace College. I don't know where that was. It was at, it was at Afron this year. Also CSU, Ms., who went to CSU? Mr. Patton went to CSU and did some recruiting there, same thing, we're making connections, getting people logged into AppleTrack using the QR code. And then Gina Wilson and Jonah Forte went to the ESC and we were top recruiters at the ESC event as well. With that being said, I had Mrs. Schiller do an analytic report on our employment webpage where three times that hit this time last year than we were this year than we were last year. So people are, they're hearing us, they're listening to our message and we are on a recruitment effort. The last part of the TSL grant is partnerships, any type of partnerships in the, and they have been, the Insight Education Group and the ESC have been working with us to build partnerships to recruit and retain candidates of diverse backgrounds. The work that's been happening is really pretty profound, honestly, and really innovative. I'll talk to you about the work that we've been doing. We are on a waitlist, unfortunately, who would imagine, but you have to be on a waitlist to get into the CAMRA. The Cleveland area educators of the, I can't remember what CAMRA means, I actually looked it up right before and already forgot. But we're on a waitlist for, to be a part of that, which they're a consortium of educators who get together just to kind of talk about the recruitment and retention needs of candidates of diverse backgrounds. In September, four of the Recruitment Committee members are going to FAMU and it was kind of interesting the way that I learned about that. But we're going to go to their job fair and we'll meet their candidates, juniors and seniors, and be able to follow up with them over the course of the year and invite them in for events, keep their contact information, hey, here's still going on here in Garfield, don't forget about us. Also, Ms. Clotman is taking two members of the Recruitment and Retention Committee to Tuskegee. They're going also in September, the week before the FAMU event. And they'll be meeting with the freshmen, juniors, the freshman sophomores, juniors and seniors on different days in their seminar classes to talk about, to talk about Garfield Heights, but also partner with them in building what are things that a freshman could do that will help advance their career in education. And we'll be partnering with Tuskegee to do that, kind of their sighting. And then the biggest partnership that Gina Wilson and Paul Blazer were able to establish is with Central State. And we will go there in October, the entire Recruitment and Retention Team. And they have a whole program that is to bring their candidates to our campus and then we go there. They'll come with us to different events in our district, they'll come to, the Central State students will come here and speak to our students about going to Central State. And so we built this phenomenal partnership with them that will last the entire year. So I'm really proud of that work that they've been able to accomplish. At first, it seemed like a huge undertaking and we did it, we did some things. We did things that weren't in place last year and I'm really looking forward to growing that further. That's one of the things, that's the presentation. Looking forward to any questions or comments or concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Sizzler, for the presentation today. It was very detailed and we appreciate the update on TSL grant and how it's impacting the Garfield Heights City School District. Do anybody have any questions for Ms. Sizzler? Madam President? Ms. King?
A question and a comment. So with all of the Bulldog Aspiring Leadership Academy, the book club, all of the changes within teaching and learning, how receptive have our teachers been?
I'll tell you what they say on our feedback forms. So for the first time since I've been here, we literally in real time are getting teachers QR codes at every professional development session and asking them, what went well, what didn't? And for the most part, I will tell you that the teachers are just happy to have consistency and structure in their professional development plan. The vision was set out from the jump by Dr. Reynolds and now there is a connection to what we're doing. We, it's very, very serious in the teaching and learning department that we meet every single child, every single day, and that we cannot do it alone, we have got to build this environment of collaborative disposition, professional collaborative disposition so that we can learn from each other together to positively impact kids. I'll say that. The biggest other feedback in terms of like what's bothering them, there's been there's, there's been a significant instructional change when we're talking about moving from teaching like the book versus teaching the standard. And that's a fair, right? That's a fair observation from the teachers. And one, the big thing that they're asking is, can we have more time? Can we have more time to collaborate and plan and all that stuff? And that's the best thing for them to say. That means I want to do this work. I just need more time to do it. And I think through, Dr. Reynolds says, through practice, through continuing to practice, continuing to provide the opportunity and us staying consistent, that all those pieces are going to come into play. And I'm seeing it already in terms of instructional practice. People actually utilizing the coaches and attending coaching cafes and coming, the attendance and participation feedback from instructional staff meetings, things like that. We're, we're hitting you on every level. There's not going to be an excuse moving forward for, I didn't know or it wasn't clear on what the mission was. It wasn't clear on what my expectations with the teacher are. And I think people, we like structure. We like questions answered. And so I would say that that's been the biggest feedback from teachers is they want more time to do the things that we're asking them to do and that they do appreciate the consistency and the clear vision that they have for teaching and learning.
And my comment is, thank you very much for the update on recruitment and retention. I've really been digging my heels in and increasing our pool of diverse candidates. And I'm very hopeful that a year from now, after these partnerships have been able to fully blossom, that we begin to see an increase in our, our pool applicants here at Garfield.
Yes.
I'm hoping some now, but you know, definitely with the work of all of the partnerships that you talked about. Because they're all starting in the fall, you know, I'm excited to see the fruits of that labor.
Yeah, me too. And so is the committee. It's, we're all learning alongside each other and looking at national transfer recruitment and retention. And one of our big barriers for lack of better term is overcoming. So we've got to lure people. We have the campaign now and they're looking at our website. How do we get them in the door? And we've been able to, and Central State literally is, they've done a great job of kind of helping us help ourselves. And they're, they really, the first question they asked, they're being pretty kind of diligent, which is a good service to their students is, what is, why should we partner with Garfield Heights? What do you guys have to offer our candidates? And that makes us, it's the right question to ask because it makes us be reflective about that question and be able to answer it moving forward. And so that, that's kind of where we're at is, well, what do we offer and what can we do? And telling the truth when we answer that question. Instead of what we don't want to do is, is say what we think. We got to, everything's got to be based on data, true experience. So it's providing us the kind of gas in the tank to keep moving.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and it's very informative. I think that it really helped us to kind of wrap, to wrap my head around this TSL grant and exactly what it should be doing and exactly what it is doing in present time. I do have a few questions. One of my questions goes about attendance as an optional PD, which you kind of answered with Ms. King's question. So I'm assuming that attendance as an optional PD, like the cafes and they crack now are, you see that increasing?
I think it's steady. Yeah, more steady than, nobody's running through the door. At the time, and some of that was our marketing, right? At first, we were calling it new teacher cafe. We were like, oh, we know many teachers need a space and a place and a place to connect and we want to build those relationships. And then we realized as we were beginning to dig into professional development, as I got that opportunity to say, all right, here's what's happening on PD day, but what then is happening? Boots on the ground and you find out, this really needs to be open to everybody. That everybody should be open to those conversations. And then, you know, then we were behind the eight ball a little bit on our marketing campaign. And so I would say that we were steady. The new teachers, come on, they love it. They need that opportunity to come and talk to a coach, vent a little bit, or ask a veteran teacher, how do you, or how do I, or why do I feel like all I'm doing all day is grading papers? How do I, you know, the new teacher kind of stuff, that was really great. And it was really great for our veteran, so experienced, but new to Garfield Heights teachers to kind of learn the ropes. And so we had consistent attendance with veteran teachers who are new to our district in that area as well. I anticipate, kind of like we were talking about with recruitment and retention, I anticipate that blossoming even further as we get ahead of it for the next school year and be, and begin to consistently communicate, you can come to one-on-one. You can come to a small group with your friends. You can come to a large group, like, look, we're here for you. And this is, this is our job and our role.
And that kind of leads me to my second question. So we heard a good deal about what we're going to recruit new staff members and teachers to the district. What do we have in mind or what are we working on to retain our current teachers who we have in the district that we might be losing their attention?
So I'm glad you asked the question because I really need to be honest with the Board of Education about what's going on here with the TSL grant in that way. So we do have the formation of our campaign and the help in building partnerships with colleges. And I kind of alluded to the colleges coming back to us and saying, well, what are you guys doing for your recruits? There's an entire component of the TSL grant that is meant for, it's literally cash to go into the pockets of teachers who are here. And also in the recruitment, that lure piece and getting them to come and stay. And so it's a three-pronged bucket. So three prongs and then three prongs within this bucket. And it's called a performance-based compensation is the title that is in this bucket. And the grant outlines how the money is to be spent. So performance-based means teachers who teach tested subjects and they have grown your students. There's a whole pot of cash that we should be able to award our teachers. And definitely, our students grew. You're clearly putting in the work. As Dr. Reynolds says, you bring in the fire and we want to compensate you for that. The other piece to make that equitable, and this was in partnership, Dr. Reynolds, myself and the Inside Education Group said, well, how, what about the teachers who don't have tested subjects? How do we provide some level of equity? And so Dr. Reynolds did a data dive and we found that the teachers who have really high attendance, they're here every day, their scores are higher. So we would assume then that the teachers who are here every day, which are not a tested subject, their students are probably learning more consistently, right? And so we decided as a district to offer, through an equity lens, an attendance component of performance-based compensation. So if, you know, whatever the number of days that you've been here, you also can earn cash right in your paycheck and to help retain, again, the teachers who are bringing the fire, doing the work. And then the last component of that is for the recruitment piece, which is supposed to be for signing bonuses. So myself and Jonah Forte, Dr. Reynolds and Mr. Ogo partnered in building a three-tiered component for district need. So what are the categories of employment that we cannot run our district if we don't have enough employees, right? And so then you tier it out and then if we are recruiting, and I'm just going to say this, intervention specialists, high district need right now and they're state mandated. We have to have the legal mandated component of number of people to service our kids. And I know I'm not saying that right now, but then they would receive a signing bonus to compensate our district. Other districts are offering signing bonuses and we are actively losing, losing good candidates. Because when you're new and young, a couple thousand dollars is a lot of money and all other things considered equal, that's a decision going to be made, right? And so we're having that, that problem. And at the, we have got to get a partnership in order to get it approved with the union. Honestly, we, we don't have a ton of control on how that component is written. And if we do not spend that money, we will lose it for the rest of the grant. And so, thank you, Mr. Ogo, for reinforcing that. There's the bucket of money. I have to spend it the way the grant has written it. And if we don't come to an agreement, we're not putting that cash in the pocket, pockets of our teachers.
The federal government will sweep it, forfeit it, and we'll never see it again.
Yes.
Are we in negotiations with the union? Are we talking with them and they don't want the money?
I, I don't.
I don't think we have that discussion.
Probably not at the work sessions.
So I, what I can say is, the, the union has, has the proposal. And it wasn't accepted at this point. I would love to have further conversation. But again, the way the grant dictates how that money is spent. And it's, you know, we're going to do our best to continue to reiterate the fact that we have, got to spend it or we lose it forever. And the way that the grant is written and the federal budgets come out, sometimes that could be even more money. So right now it's an X dollar. It could be X plus some dollars moving forward. So it's a barrier that we're trying to kind of get through right now so that we can do the recruitment and retention efforts that the TSL grant is set up to explore with us.
And Dr. Reynolds, as it relates to that, I'm sure that you are very confident that as we're working through this and the stages of getting to this point, that we will most definitely come to a conclusion that will be in the best interest for the students and the district as it relates to this piece.
I'm extremely hopeful that we'll be able to get to a point where we can submit this proposal to the TSL folks and get this thing working. Because the last thing I want to do is miss our own opportunity to put money in the pockets of teachers. That is the last thing we want to do. So I, I want to ensure that we are ready and willing to have conversations to make this thing work for teachers. We've always been looking for opportunities to, to really, to reward our teachers who have been consistent, who have been growing kids, who have been here in a lot of cases. And this is our opportunity to do that and this is an opportunity for us to, to compete with other districts who are, who have incentives for their teachers for, for the new recruits, like the signing bonuses. And like she said, that right there would be, if everything was even, a signing bonus could turn the table for, for someone who's trying to make a decision on, on their future. We, we want to not only just kind of focus on those new recruits, but also focus on those folks that we have here every single day. And that's why we came up with this plan to, to hit everyone, to make sure everyone is benefiting from this. And we are very, very hopeful that we'll, we'll be able to come up with something very similar just to ensure that we're, we're putting this money right, direct into the pockets of our teachers.
I know the performance-based incentive and attendance-based is probably something hopefully we can roll out sooner and later, but have we kind of missed the window to employ the signing bonus opportunities? Because I mean, we're like, I mean, where are we at with hiring season as it relates to educators?
So it's always hiring season and that's what we're learning in our campaign.
We're getting close to that window.
Yeah.
We're getting close to that window where we're going to just miss out on most candidates. Because it's, it's, last month was the high time. So we need to make sure that we are taking advantage. And that's why I was trying to put kind of a sense of urgency to this because there's a window. There's a hiring window where you want to attract our best candidates possible for our students, for, for adding the things. And there is a time that's going to be, going to come up that we are going to need to submit this proposal to the ESC to say, here's what our plan is. And I don't want us to get caught up in the process where we're now another month and then we're, we're at the end of that, that window where we can get our best candidates. So there has to be a sense of urgency that things can't just kind of linger on because we're going to miss out on that opportunity and the last thing we want to do is send money back. And it's the last thing that we ever want to do.
And also I think more than the money piece, the last thing we want to do is, and I think it plays into the retention piece, is not being competitive and not getting, having access to the best qualified candidates and having to settle, which means that we have to turn those people around because we had to fill a position with the candidates that were available and we were not in a position for the highly qualified or to be as competitive and just losing out on those opportunities is just not good for the district at all. We don't want to, you know, keep being behind the ball and not being competitive in our hiring practices because I'm sure that plays a big role in our retention issues. That we just are not, we're not attracting.
The candidates.
Yeah, or we're losing them because there's things that, you know, and not just monetary, but there's a lot of components that as a district, you know, what are we doing to make sure that we're attracting?
Yeah. And we, we just want to be able to speak the truth, right? So if we have an opportunity to feed teachers, financially is one thing, but it's also, this is what we're saying. We care about you and every opportunity that we have to enhance the work that you're doing or reward you for the work that you're doing. We're going to seize that opportunity and there's a huge sense of urgency as we've been kind of digging through. It's been interesting, right? Kind of figuring out, what is this grant actually? What's the essence of it? Why, why is there confusion? And just, Dr. Reynolds is like, ask the questions and keep asking until you get the answer. And that's what the team's been able to do. And just figure out, all right, now what can we do that's really great for us? And we have, in just a few months, and this sounds, I'm, I'm not super good at like bragging or whatever, but we've been able to, by bringing that sense of urgency that Dr. Reynolds talks about to the TSL grant and saying, we're not stopping. We've been able to set ourselves apart. We're the only district who have, in, in the TSL cohort, who has a coach in every single building. We're the only district who already has an instructional playbook and a coaching manual. Our PD plan is data-informed and we're being asked to present at the state level on that, right? It's hard work that's been happening. Now we've just got to make it pay off. And in, these obstacles are things that we got to, we have to have that sense of urgency. We have to do what we say we're going to do and reward the people who are here. Growing every child every day, you know? That's, that's kind of the, the big push for us in terms of the TSL and Garfield Heights status and that.
The CAMRA coalition, is there like a membership cost or something like that?
Completely funded through the TSL grant and we don't pay it. So I don't know how necessarily, but the ESC wrote the TSL grant, which is how all these districts get access to it. One of the things that we did talk about though, is there's the teacher channel and Inside Education kind of took that over. But then we wanted one specific to us because we didn't have to, want to have to worry about like videos of kids, right? And so Garfield Heights will have our own. So each of our own teachers will have, or it's actually going to be instructional leaders and principals will have their own logins so that when we're having those coaching conversations, it's not just open out to anybody. And it's part of being a TSL grant member. So that's amazing and it's really impactful for what's been happening in terms of just coaching. And we think we know what we look like when we're teaching and then we see ourselves on video. And we're learning some things about what teaching looks like on us. And it's been pretty impactful. Our coaching conversations have just got really meaningful and deep. And I didn't realize I always stood right here. I didn't realize I only call on the kids who raised their hand. You know, things like that because we don't see what it looks like on us. So I'm really looking forward to what I consider like nitrous in the tank. It's going to propel our ability to reflect really on our own teaching. Looking forward to that. It's kind of my jam.
Along with yourself and the other coaches, correct me if I'm wrong, you, all of you guys were educators here in the Garfield Heights City School District, spent time in the classroom teaching our students. So you guys come from not just a teaching perspective, but actually just truly understand what it is to teach in Garfield Heights City School District?
So the, we do have, Ms. Nicole Merton, she came from Florida. She moved up and she's an instructional coach. And when we hire, and now actually we've posted some positions through the TSL grant, we're able to add an additional coach at the middle school. And in terms of need, that'll be the building, right? And new teachers and things like that. And so we partnered with Inside Education to really come up with a rigorous kind of hiring process. And so, um, we partnered with Inside Education to really come up with a rigorous kind of hiring process. Um, our Grow with Garfield campaign is really important, right? Cause we mean that, we want people to be able to grow. The other thing that I'm learning, um, actually through the tooling of Dr. Reynolds is the importance of variety. And so one of the things that, um, we're discussing as a leadership team is not necessarily always taking our best teachers out of the classroom because it's a difference in being a teacher leader versus a classroom teacher, right? And so we really want to make sure that we have people through the Aspiring Leaders app cohorts, things like that, people who have that leadership vision, that servant leader is really what we're looking for. And in that recruitment of instructional coaches, that's going to be our lens. This is a service position. It's not about coming in and telling people what to do. You're getting in there and you're partnering with people to have honest conversations. And teachers aren't failures. This is work of our heart. You guys know that. And so sometimes when we talk about teaching and learning and when the data isn't right or doesn't reflect the effort I put into something, it can be kind of a difficult conversation to have. And you have to, um, kind of have the ability to navigate those. And so we're looking for specific types of candidates that have that servant mentality, um, educational experience, that's huge. Um, and, um, the ability, the, the leadership mentality too, that leadership kind of, I think it's in our DNA sometimes. Um, and the things that you can't teach, those are the ones we want in there with our teachers because that's where you get the biggest impact for kids. And again, the coaching model is purely about the impact on students. The teacher moves we make and how does that impact students and constantly reflecting on what can we do better? What can we do better?
I think I just got one more comment or question. And you look at like our past hiring and retention strategy versus where we're at now with this TSL grant. I don't know what the approach was, but it seemed like we didn't have like a large team like we reported with, with the TSL grant. So, you know, we maybe had like this small handful of people that was responsible for hiring, um, and, you know, retaining employees. And it seems like this grant has actually, and I say that our past practices were not good, but it don't look like we had the resources and demand power to really come up with, to really move this thing. Um, and so, um, I'm just glad that we have this opportunity to really kind of put some things in place. Just like with the playbooks and other things, it really looks like we're using this grant to do some sustainable things, like we have money now, but we're creating some things that would let, will last throughout our district and can grow with Garfield.
Yeah.
Um, as we grow, um, as a district. I want to commend you on your work in just since January. As I heard that you took over, um, this component of the grant and you really took off with it and really had us making leaps and bounds. Um, it has also been my understanding that Garfield High City School District and you shared on it a little bit, but we're really kind of setting some trends for our cohorts. And really a lot more progressive in areas. And those are the things that a lot of people just don't know the wealth we have within our district and just the treasures that we have here and our ability and capacity to be great leaders, just not within our school district, but just in education in this region. So I'm grateful to you and your team for highlighting the leadership and the gems that we do have here in the Garfield High City School District. And those are the things that will attract candidates, um, to our district and have the opportunity to impact our students over time. So thank you guys for that.
Yes, and you reminded me because I have another list of people that we. I know y'all trying to get out, but not without this first. Um, our recruitment and retention team, and also thank you to Dr. Reynolds because that's the gas in the tank, is sending a vision and then we all get after it and opening the door to who wants to be on recruitment and retention. And it's, it, to some people, it can sound like it's more work, but the team dove in. And, um, we have a great team. I just want to acknowledge them. Miss Adrienne Clotman, uh, Mr. John Acorte, Mr. Timothy Hurt, of course, Jim. Uh, Ms. Gina Wilson, the district unicorn, I call her. Um, and honestly, just a phenomenal human. Mr. Paul Glazer has been phenomenal in Recruitment and Retention Committee. Ms. Kiera Rice also, I don't know where she gets her energy and her passion and she wears it out here and is just putting it out. Uh, Ms. Basier, just super detail oriented, making sure that we're tight and right on all the things, every detail, every I, every T dotted and crossed. And then of course, Mr. Patton, leading the work of the campaign while before I even got started. So we do have, you're exactly right, and thank you for acknowledging that. And thank you, Dr. Reynolds, for the opportunity. We have some really great people who really, really truly want to bring the fire and do the work. And it's, it's setting us apart already. Districts are asking us what we're doing and that's really huge in just a few months. It's really great. I'm really, really proud of the team and it's not me. I just went and did some detective work and I never stopped. So there's that. Are there any other questions?
I just have one quick question.
Sure.
Um, the aspiring leaders program that starts tomorrow. Um, it hasn't been well received and what's the initial amount of people that have signed up to do that?
Okay, so we sent, um, in the, in the previous year, we sent three people, um, to go. And, uh, Ms. Augustine, uh, our last professional development, she kind of did a commercial, um, what does it mean to be an aspiring leader? And I have 17 people in the district who have signed up, um, and want to be a part of the work of leading the district initiatives, um, partnering with Dr. Reynolds' leadership team to do it. So I'm really excited to hear that, 17 people. Um, and so without really knowing what aspiring leaders were before, and then people not really knowing what that even is still, um, they heard from a teacher who was out here saying, yo, this works. This is really good. It's impacted by teaching and now they want to be a part of it too. So we went from not really having a real sure footing of what that would look like to more than enough people who want to talk about it, be a part of the conversation. And I'm really, really pleased to, um, dive in tomorrow with, with those people. So, um, the way that it worked out, because it's summer work, right? So how's that going to look? And 17 people are like, yeah, some people are, oh, I'm on vacation. If there's a different professional development, but please sign me up, send me all the materials. I want to be a part of it. And I'm getting emails as we're really close. You know, it's still on, right? It's still, so they, they still, even after a full year, they've only been out of school for a couple of days, are looking forward to coming back and being a part of it. So I'm really excited for that. I'm a little nervous that I hope it don't let me down, but I'm really excited for it.
Sure. Great job.
Wow, thank you.
And I just kind of want to give it up to our educators, just as we're rolling out these new initiatives and these new pushes and just, you know, for them really putting in the work too. Um, because this would not be successful if you did not have, um, the educators buy in. And it's just kind of been, you know, they've been putting in the hard work while we do what's best for kids. Um, and pivoting in some different directions. So I just want to say thank you to the educators for your hard work and your commitment. And then those of you who are just really taking some leadership roles and ensuring that just even, you know, taking the time to, um, perfect your craft. Um, because it impacts our children at the end of the day. So I see all this not being able to happen and work, um, if we didn't have our educators on board, their willingness to do the work, even when they're unsure. Because there's so many new and different things, but they're hanging in there because they do share the vision of the district to do what's best for kids. So I appreciate that.
And that's the thing, we are committed to, um, making sure that we're collaborating with teachers, that we're providing these opportunities because they have, they, they stepped up. They've been a part of a, a lot of these things and we want to increase that collaborative effort because we can't make this happen without them. And, and what I call this, called feeding the fire. And what we do is making sure that when we see that teacher who wants to do more, wants to learn more, we feed that by book studies, by sending them to national conferences. We had an opportunity to do that with several of our teachers. We want to continue to do those sort of things because that's how we help our kids by helping our educators to, to do more, to do more. And we reward them, we feed them, we feed those flames. And that's how we're going to go ahead and be, uh, very, very successful.
Thank you guys. Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions?
If there's no other questions, thank you again.
Thank you guys for having me. Thank you so much. Yes.
We appreciate it. Okay, our next item on our agenda this evening is the tentative agenda review. This is the review of our regular board meeting, which is going to be on Tuesday, June 20th. And, um, just want to, is there anything you'd like to highlight that, or else? That's how we can start.
Yes, um, we will be introducing our new Director of Technology. Um, he will actually be here, um, to, uh, to accept the, uh, the invitation of being a part of this team. Um, we will definitely miss Ms. Bailey. Ms. Bailey is going to be going out there to do some wonderful, wonderful things that I am very jealous of. And, um, we have done a, a, a great job with, um, with coming up with a plan to help transition, uh, Mr. Wayland onto the team. We're also looking at, uh, a new supervisor for special education, um, uh, as well. Um, we are working to, to respond to the, the needs of the district as, you know, we, we've learned throughout this first year. And I think a lot of the things we'll be talking with TSL grant, um, with our new hires, with some of the, the new job descriptions that we are also talking about, is all in response to what we've learned. Um, these are, are not situations where we just kind of, let's do this and let's just throw anything out of there. They're actually well planned, well thought of, partnering with, uh, our new treasurer to ensure that we are, um, being consistent with taking care of the financial health of the district as well. So, so these new hires will, will be, uh, great assistance with us. Uh, the other pieces are, are basically the, uh, few contracts that are, um, consistent with what we're doing as a school district with our, our special ed department. Uh, and also we're going to be purchasing some new items and that follows. It's up to our treasurer to talk about that a little bit.
So ODE, um, committed to allowing districts to use, uh, ESSER funds to purchase new buses if it allows for the operational continuity of the district in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. So we, um, with Gary Moore, our new, uh, business operations manager, we're able to get four bids for buses, for four new buses for the district. Um, three of our buses will not meet inspection. So the four will allow us to replenish the fleet using ESSER money, which is the opportunistic time to use it, given our allocation next year. And then we'll also have one to kind of bolster the fleet so we can build that capital plan moving forward in the next five, 10 years. So we're not, you know, we're not making five bus purchases in one year in five or 10 years. So, um, that will also help with just transportation and then the issue of not passing bus inspections for the district. We're also looking at bans for special education transport as well. Another, um, working with OD to make sure it's all, all good under that ESSER grant, but that would be, that would come later. But that is, um, it was a good, good news for the district when we were able to use some of that. It's going to total about, um, $480,000, maybe $500,000. I don't know when we get the final quote, but all within what we'll budget and that with the allocated ESSER money for next year.
Thank you. Is there any questions regarding the agenda?
Now, President, Mr. Reynolds, under, um, section 11, where we're talking about, um, on page 10 of 19, um, we're still missing some language in there. Um, approve the following teachers for attending professional development conferences outside their contracted days, um, as outlined in appendix E of their, of the contract, to be paid out of Title II A grant, but there's no teachers listed.
We'll get that, we'll get that up.
And then right underneath.
Yeah.
Um, we've got teachers, but not where it's been.
It'll be Title II A. I'll add that to it, yeah. Apologize for that.
It, because I did have a question about the Bulldog aspire, aspiring leader academy, but I learned about that.
Dr. Reynolds, also on, um, item number 11 and the number of resignations that we have on here, um, just want to ask publicly, are we doing any type of exit interviews to kind of determine, um, by people, are we here the district? So that is where, um, creating some retention plans, they are data driven?
Yes, as, as most folks who would talk to me in the district, they know that data is extremely important to me. Actually, when we're trying to make decisions on how to improve our efforts. And yes, there will be an exit survey. What is the survey? I actually spoke with Mr. Patton, um, and all of our folks who are, are exiting the, the district will be provided an opportunity to communicate with us exactly their, their reasons and things that we can improve on. And, you know, sometimes those responses are tough responses, but that is what makes us better as a school district, to really understand some areas that we can improve in. So yeah, we, we do have some resignations that we are, um, we, we want to ensure that we are, there's some resignations and they've had some really good opportunities and others that we don't know and we need to know, um, what's happening and, uh, how we can improve. So yes.
Yes, very good, you know, some, some of our, um, some of our gems on this. Um, and, um, I think it's important for us to, you know, understand, um, what we can do better so that we can hold on to the gems of the district.
Is there any other questions regarding?
Um, in item number 18, um, there is also some items as it relates to curriculum. Is that, um, Edmonton?
Yes.
East Sparks, STEM courses? Um, did we, how, I know that some of the board members have, and we haven't had an opportunity to kind of address this yet, which we need to soon. Um, y'all won't, here won't be initially, but just to, you talked about a curriculum committee. And how are these decisions being made relative to the curriculum? And in particular, these STEM courses, and just say STEM courses?
Yes.
Um, and will the board eventually just kind of be outlined on exactly what those courses are going to look like? And what's to look forward to?
Specifically about the STEM courses, one of the areas that I wanted to ensure that we provide more opportunities for, for our students to have more opportunities in the area of STEM. Um, we were talking about, um, uh, especially with math, science, engineering, technology. Um, we want to ensure that they have those opportunities because what we're seeing and what I've seen in my, uh, experience in the past, there are so many opportunities for our students that we just hadn't tapped into because we hadn't really exposed them to those opportunities and whether it were things that they are available for them. So we want to start younger, same thing what we're doing with, um, our GCCC program, um, to expose them to what STEM really is. Um, those opportunities to create, those opportunities to, to really start collaborating with partners and, and doing those different things in those areas of technology, engineering, um, and, and mathematics and science. Um, so those courses will be in our, uh, elementary schools, uh, and also in our middle school as well. And we currently have, um, a course in our high school as well to expose more of our kids to STEM. And that leads to other opportunities where we will. And that leads to other opportunities where we're, uh, C B C C, um, with what we're trying to do with um, the G C C C. Um, but, and also with the curriculum pieces that we're doing, some of those like Edmonton, we all, we currently use. We're expanding that, but what, what we're doing is looking through the um, uh, the question that I know that the board has had in the past, are we looking through the lens of equity? And that is a part of the um, of choosing the curriculum that we're, we're using. Um, there's actually a form that we provide to any of the, the folks that we are intending to partner with, that we have to make sure that they are able to answer any of those questions. I'll provide that to the board. Um, Ms. Casa will be forwarding that to them because she headed this endeavor, but it is not something that we're doing alone. We're also collaborating with our teachers so that they have some input on exactly the, the um, technology and the curriculum that we are choosing. So there are processes and one, another thing, when, when we talk about data, but another thing that we're also making sure that there's um, processes and there's structures in place and that we're not just, only just making decisions, but there are processes in place on how we make our decisions as a district. So those things are in place.
When we do, with, with curriculum, like we're expanding and bringing on something that we've used before, do we have ways, is there a point where like educators get a chance to provide feedback on how particular program worked for them? You know, you know, did it provide them the support they needed in applying that structure? Like, is there somewhere those conversations happen that allows the teaching and learning department to say, oh, we need to think about a different curriculum? Or we need to expand this because this is working for our district and this will, will benefit us? How do we kind of come to those conclusions as it relates to?
Usually those happen in those instructional conversations. Our, our teaching and learning departments is embedded in our uh, T V T process. So they're in meetings with our teachers as well. And they usually just happen organically. There's not something where we come, come back and do a review of the, the um, of the choices. It, it, it really just happens organically within those meetings. Uh, and those meetings are usually around data in the first place. Um, so there's not something where we kind of uh, uh, do this process alone. It's embedded within those conversations in our T V Ts.
Thank you for sharing that. Just wanted to make sure. And is our current technology teachers, are they equipped to teach us, us STEM, expanding their instruction to STEM versus just strictly technology?
I'll allow Ms. Bailey to.
Thank you. Yes, they are. So um, Ms. Costa's been working with them over the past few years. They've been to several trainings, they've been looking at the curriculum, they've been implementing it in little bits and pieces, and they're fully prepared to go forward with it next year to implement full STEM.
Thank you. I know in, at William Foster Elementary, our children's technology um, curriculum has expanded way beyond just the computer. Like, they get robotized, I think they did Sony, I mean, they, it has expanded and I really, and they've enjoyed, they really enjoy it, have been coming back. Like, I only know because the kids are coming home talking about the hands-on, project-based stuff that they're doing within the technology class.
That's that exposure that we were, we were talking about, just exposing kids to those opportunities consistently. That is how we um, lure kids into exploring. So, that's.
We'll continue to do that. We have it, STEM right now is at the summer school program. So Camp Invention, um, this is our second year and the students are really enjoying it again. I was watching them um, do some measuring today of these little things that they're making to roll across the room and they were really excited by it. Um, we want that same thing during the school year. So we'll continue to support those STEM teachers. They'll have more professional developments and they've even gone to visit other buildings um, in other districts that have successful programs happening right now. So we'll keep providing them with that support and of course, the materials to do all of that as well for our students.
I mean, even as a parent, the STEM fair that you guys had at William Foster, I didn't even understand how, you know, um, vast STEM is. Um, and the kids were like already, and I have a kindergartner and first grader and they were already familiar with the things. I'm just like, how you do that? Oh my God, it does now. So you have to do is this, mom? And so, yeah, it was very nice. Oh, that was amazing. Like, I don't think we've ever had anything in the district like that before. And that was phenomenal and it was um, and the parents were learning and enjoying it too, so it was real good.
And that's good as Ms. Morris acts it. She put that on at the school and um, she actually received a grant from the Army Corps of Engineers. So this year, they will be actually making rockets, real rockets that they will be launching within their STEM programs. And that's a great opportunity because not many schools receive that grant from the Army Corps of Engineers. So we're excited to see more stuff happening.
Wow, thank you. Those are those gems. Thank you. Any other questions regarding the tentative agenda? There's no other questions regarding the tentative agenda. Our next item on tonight's agenda is just a discussion on the Board of Education's summer retreat. We were um, talking about doing um, a summer retreat. And we wanted to kind of look at some dates and some framework. Thank you, um, Ms. King. Ms. King sent over some items that she loves to see um, discussed in that summer retreat. I know when we went to Colaspo, um, I did attend um, a professional development about board retreats. And um, just something I want to share with you guys that was some good insight about something that we can think about framing our retreats moving on next year. They did um, this, the district that was presenting indicated that they did a fall retreat and a spring retreat each year. And during the fall retreat is where they received um, a status check um, just on where things are at with the district. And you, and they examined the um, progress toward the strategic goals. Um, is what happened during the fall retreat. And then in the spring retreat, they used that to um, explore data, plan for next year and to explore new initiatives. So that was the time where, you know, in the spring, you talked about the superintendent will present where we're at and what new initiatives that they would like to see go forward into the next school year. And that would happen um, in the spring. Um, getting it started, um, they talked about how they started all of this off, kind of, because you gotta kind of set a foundation before you kind of get to this. Um, with the two-day retreat is where it kind of all started for them. And um, this two-day retreat, they did a whole board training just on some governance. Um, they had departmental reports and updates. So each cabinet department reported and updated to the board. Um, they had teacher student, teacher and student panel discussions to the part of this two-day retreat just to kind of get some impact, some feedback on um, the strategic plan and how it's impacting teachers and students. So it was, that panel was based upon just where we're at with the strategic plan and it was strictly just based upon strategic plan impact. Um, we didn't get into the weeds with the other things, it was just strictly board level questions relative to how's the strategic plan impacted. Um, and, and then they talked about, they would talk about just classroom observation of school tours that they had. And that's where they would share um, feedback um, during that. So those are some options for us to kind of think about as framing, making sure that we have regular retreats with like intentions to move our governance work together. But I think our summer retreat, it may benefit us to do a two-dayer just to kind of get, you know, caught up to speed, especially with our current team here. Um, and then, you know, know how we'll be planning for the fall. And the fall can be just, you know, a Saturday retreat, nothing, you know, and do that. So I, uh, I can work with Dr. Reynolds just based upon you guys' feedback and things you guys want to see with Dr. Reynolds and feel to establish it. And um, you may want to share some of the things you sent over and bring my sticky note. But it was um, teaching and learning and, and really looking at comparing our data from uh, last year to this year. Um, S E L, looking at all of the contracts that we've had with S E L providers and looking at the, the outcomes. Because if we want to continue to utilize them, we want to see the data. And we want to make sure that it provided the services, not provided the services, but it had the impact that we wanted to see. Uh, diversion program, I know we just started in, in March. Um, what was the impact that we've seen thus far on the diversion program? How many students did we send to the diversion program? Looking at um, discipline data um, over the year. Um, how many students were um, sent for expulsion hearings? Um, as compared to, I don't know if we want to compare to last year, but how many students were, because that was an extraordinary year um, for everyone. Um, I got it here. Okay, you missed anything? I write it through something. Um, academics including math and data this year compared to last year and academic plan overview, social emotional learning, number of referrals, number of expulsion hearings and diversion program update, results of the data collected from the contracted S E L providers. Um, D E I update, have we taken any actions from equity audit? And other D I, D E I update and results, overall strategic plan update, attendance, reorganization with new positions and org chart. She's visual.
And then I just have a comment or a question for Dr. Reynolds in regards to a spring retreat. Does that give us enough time to get the data? Because we're having, we do testing in May.
Yeah.
So we're, it takes a while to get that data. And if we do summer, you also have the results at the end of course exams. So we kind of know where we're going.
Yes, summer would be better for us. It gives an opportunity for us to get all the data and all the information in. Once we have the year in closeout, basically, so we can go ahead and gather all the information and everything that we're submitting to the state as well. So it's consistent with what we're gonna be having conversations about. It's gonna be very consistent with what the report card would eventually look like. So um, a summer retreat, the, the, the fall is exactly right. That, that matches because we want to see where we are midway. See what we've done, this is what our plan was at the beginning. Here's where we are now, here's an update. And then after um, everything's all said and done, we can go ahead and then start talking about the data and what uh, the impact of all the things that we put in place, how that's helped our, our children. So, yeah, I think um, June, July would probably be a little more, uh, instead of, I don't know, than April May. So June, July would probably give a little more assistance to us.
Yeah. Well, I guess my question when we talk about just reviewing new initiatives, y'all won't be making those decisions in June and July. You would kind of, you know, wait for the data to come through. Do you guys kind of know what we're following through or what we need to change and pivot prior to the, the hard data coming in?
Yes, that is, that is correct. Uh, along the way, we start figuring out, okay, here's what we need to adjust for next year. Here's what we need to consider for next year. And then we gather and we have these conversations and we then make adjustments to the plan so that we are continuously working to get better every single year. So that is a thing that we're going to be doing every single year, even on the financial side of things. Where we understand what we're gonna be working with. Now we need to come up with a plan for spending to ensure that we're gonna be consistent with the plan that our treasurer has in, in place and how it works collaboratively with what we're trying to do structurally. So these things are, 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 are things that are gonna be just consistent efforts every single year. These are the things that we're gonna do. A retreat would also be a part of that so that we can update the board on where we are and what we're doing and what adjustments we've made and, and the plan moving forward to improve our.
Yeah, I'm fine with summer retreat, um, the way we all kind of have deep breath, you know?
A little woozah, a little woozah right there.
Yeah, maybe maybe summer retreat is a two-day retreat, you know? And that fall, um, just to, you know, Saturday, I think that may be a good. And then that summer, that summer retreat, the two-day, when we really kind of just talk about superintendent and treasurer goals too, because we'll have some data from you guys, you know, as to what we had and things that have been accomplished. And we can make that a part of the retreat. So as we're planning for this summer, looking at dates, I'm gonna tell y'all this, when's your school coming back in? Like, in August. So, unfortunately, I don't think I'm gonna be available until like August because I'm having surgery in July. Or the end of July, maybe I can squeeze, like, I'm having shoulder surgery July thirteenth. So no, I'm not gonna want to see that. Unless people before, but that's too soon, like, well, yeah, I don't, I don't, I guess. I'm still be.
August looks the best.
Yeah.
We have something scheduled for second, third, and fourth of August for our leadership team.
So we're looking at like August, um, fifth, fourth and fifth, fifth and sixth.
About that fourth, about that.
Yeah, I can't, I can't do that. But you said you're doing something the second, third, and fourth?
Second, third, fourth, yes.
Oh, the dates, two, three, and four, not weeks.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Okay, I'm like, y'all, this is, okay, okay, okay.
Dr. Reynolds, do your teachers come back on the fourteenth?
Teachers are back on the fourteenth.
And if two days is a challenge, we can fit it into one day into, you know?
Are we looking at Friday, Saturday, or Saturday, Sunday? When we're looking at two days, what we're talking about? Or what is everyone's pleasure?
Yeah, just everyone's pleasure.
Because we, Friday, we'd have to, if it's, we're talking all day, we would need to take off of work. I don't want anybody to have to take off work. If it would be a Friday, we'd spend it.
Yeah, we could work that in.
What about the eleventh and the twelfth?
I'm, I'll, the eleventh, that'd be big. For the eighteenth, nineteenth, fourth?
Have a potential that on the nineteenth. The teachers are. Sounds like the twelfth.
Yeah, twelfth.
Do we need the thirteenth or would people be available for a couple hours on the thirteenth? We did that as the half day?
I'm fine with that.
Just would be interested in seeing the agenda, seeing if the teachers return on Monday. It was not sure how much work our professors might, you know, like unless.
It's true.
Like, the four, four day, I know that.
A board for that, I know we're looking at presentations from different departments and seeing how I had to promote a board retreat on the day before teachers.
I think we have some things planned and appreciate that, uh, we do have some things planned for that, that day, the fourteenth. Um, just bringing them back, convocation, convocation on the day.
Well, convocation on the sixteenth, we'll have new, new teachers in on the fourteenth.
Got you.
But for the, I mean, if we do it that way, the presentation's going to require them to stay for the whole retreat. We'll just schedule a time for them to come in, present to the board, you know, take them more than thirty minutes, you know, twenty minutes.
Huh? I said, maybe we can't get all of that.
You know, just the, you know, ten-minute presentation, enough time for some questions. And then they don't have to stay, they can, they can leave after their presentation time.
August twelfth.
Yeah. And we're not talking about a lot of presenters either, we're just talking about the, the head cabinet.
Yeah. August twelfth, Saturday.
Yeah. And then I'll work with Dr. Reynolds and feel with just coming up with, um, agenda based upon the things that you guys asked for. And then we'll kind of leave that. Is there any, um, um, more topics that you guys will be interested in? Or any speaker or any presenter, you guys would be interested in coming in to do anything for us at all? Okay, yeah. Okay, so if everybody can put that on their schedule, technically for the twelfth. And, um, say half a day on the thirteenth, possibly. We'll look at the agenda, if we can fit it in one day, we will, without it being, you know, jam packed. Um, and then, um, the thirteenth too. And then if you guys have any speakers or anything, because I think one thing we really need to be looking at too is just, um, our strategic plan is up in twenty twenty-six. Which is coming up sooner than what, you know, another school year, you know? It'd be twenty-five, twenty-six. So we gotta really start looking at, it took like a, a whole year to, you know, pan out. Um, where we're going and what we want to start seeing the district goals relates to that. So we need to start having some of those conversations too, once we get the overview of where we at on strategic plan. Um, yeah, because it's, before we know it. I think we'll, we'll need to complete it in twenty twenty-five. To roll it out in twenty twenty-six. All right, if there's nothing else regarding that, is there any other discussion this evening before we go into a brief executive session? If there's no other discussion, can I have a motion to enter into executive session as of seven thirty-four PM? And for the purpose to discuss evaluation of personnel and personnel matters? So move. Second. Mr. Oco, that was moved by Ms. Morrison and second by Ms. King. The recommendation to enter into board to executive session at seven thirty-four PM to discuss the evaluation of personnel. Can we have roll call, please?
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Mr. Eisen, Ms., Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes. You're entering to executive session as of seven thirty-four PM. No action will be taken after.